Lublin, Councilmember Casey R. Ambrose, Councilmember John Osnic, Mayor Pro Tem Woods, Mayor Ackley, City Manager Witt. Madam Mayor, I now turn the meeting over to you, please.
Thank you very much. We'll now call the meeting to order. And I also welcome everyone. And if you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. It remains standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Pro Tem Woods will now give the invocation.
Dear God, we ask you to preside over this meeting tonight. Help us to act as a unified team to open our hearts, make fair and just decisions that improve our community. Also, may we come together as a whole with the courage and strength to show kindness and compassion as we collectively work towards the betterment of Wald Lake. Amen.
Amen.
Would the clerk please call roll?
Ackley.
Here.
Ambrose.
Here.
Fernandez.
Here.
Locke.
Here.
Locke is online. Thank you. Lublin.
Here.
Osnic.
Here.
Woods.
Here.
Thank you.
We have a quorum. We'll call the meetings to order. We're all set to go. Does anyone have any request or requests for agenda changes? Anyone? Okay. First item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing on the community block grant program for the year 2026.
Good evening. There is a public hearing this evening for the program funds for program year 26. As noticed in the paper and the public hearing, the city is anticipating an application amount of $7,000 to fund eligible projects. In the packet, there is also a recommendation from staff that we would like to have approved. We would like 3,500 for Public Services to Haven and 3,500 for Public Services to Hospitality House. I would like to just inform you that there has been changes to the program for community development block grant funding. It is no longer a fixed or provided number from HUD. It is a pot that is a first-come, first-served priority base that will be selected by the staff at the, excuse me, at the county for funding. Public services, we always have done. They will continue to service that. Our next project come 2027 program here is an opportunity to then have maybe something larger to utilize funds. It's now a priority base that will be selected by the county, project-based, not by HUD of our allotment of funds. So.
Will it have different criteria?
Yes, there will be a scorecard. So of the million so dollars that are funded, the county then will take proposals and projects, and they will break it down by their scoring system as to what will be funded throughout.
Will we get a copy of that scorecard first and beforehand?
I do have one available. So when we're ready to discuss and have a public hearing even prior to, you will have that for 2027. The changes came so quickly for 2026. There wasn't time to really provide something.
So at this point, we don't know how much money we're going to receive.
We are going to, we are going to have 7,000 for Public Services, and that will be it for program year 26. Come program year 2027.
So this year, 7,000 is our number. And we're looking to donate to these two very good organizations. Very good organizations.
Yeah, just to piggyback off of Councilmember Lublin. Ms. City Clerk, do you think it would be possible just to read the two little short snippets?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
About these two groups that is, I think, very important to the city?
So the 3,500 that we are proposing for Public Services to Haven, this allows assistance for battered and abused spouses and children. This funding will assist those needing emergency provisions such as food, rent, mortgage payments, medical expenses, and transportation. The second public service that we are recommending is to Hospitality House. This will allow assistance to low-income disadvantaged residents needing emergency provisions such as food, payment of utility bills, rent, mortgage, medical expenses, and transportation. We have spoken with both of these entities, and they're both very appreciative if this is an opportunity you choose to follow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
So Madam Mayor, will you please open the public meeting? And if we have any public comment for this particular item?
Okay. So we need a motion for approval. We didn't have one, right?
No, so we'll open the public meeting. I don't have any residents' public comments online, correct? Are there any residents that wish to speak at the public hearing for community development block grant funds? No, okay. So Madam Mayor, we can close the public hearing. There will be no public comment. And now we are ready for a motion if you would like.
Do you have a motion?
I will make that motion.
Is there support?
Support. Thank you.
Any further questions? After what we've had over all the years, it is kind of a hard pill to swallow. But I guess we'll wait and see what happens next year. My only curiosity is, and I'm assuming all the communities have been cut the same way.
Yes.
Where, Wald Lake and small communities weren't just single though.
No, it is one large pot now, and it is going to be divvied up amongst those that have a format, a program, something to submit that's ready to go. So there was a lot of short notice with this.
So we need to get ready to go.
Yes, we do.
All right, I look forward to.
Kind of working on that.
Yes.
A little change of scenery.
Yes.
Okay. Any more questions or comments on the motion? Let's roll call then.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Fernandez.
Yes.
Locke.
Yes.
Lublin.
Yes.
Osnic.
Yes.
Woods.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is audience participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak? If there is, please raise your hand. And when you're acknowledged, would you come to the podium and state your name and address and your love?
Absolutely, sure.
Certainly.
Good evening. My name's Randy Savora. I live at 1145 North Eddy. Thank you for all your time to take this issue that we have. I'm from, and we do need your help on this. I'm from the Penny Lake sub for the safety of our kids. And we, we have contacted different people, but we need lights installed on our intersection at South Eddy and North Eddy. And then it continues on to a curb on North Eddy or a curb there, or curve, if you will. At this time, there's no lights. There's none installed by anybody except whoever. We don't, we don't want to talk about that no more. We want to move on. We're forwards like the city is. Just ironically today, a DPW worker stopped and talked to my neighbor. We share on our property lane a power pole. And he told her that the cities are going to put those lights up now. I've worked a lot with my neighbors and different measurements, and we've walked our sub a lot to see what's going on with lighting. He never measured it, she said. That pole is 87 feet away from the curve, which I don't know how they're going to illuminate that far away. 87 feet, that's halfway to the, the intersection we want lit up. So it's a far, it's a long ways. Plus, it's right in our front, it's right there in our front yard. So I don't know what that's about. Just want to let you know somebody did come out, and they are going to attempt to put lights up. You know, you guys know I talked maybe a month and a half to Brandon from DTE Energy. He's your rep for commercial here in the city. He's very transparent. He will call you back. And, and he gave me the info. And he said, given, he's got live Google, so he can see our lights from where he's at. He said the best way to conquer that is, it requires two lights. He's no doubt, he said, that needs it. The whole other sub is totally covered on every intersection except this one by North and South Eddy. That one doesn't have lighting. We've asked for it. They said it doesn't warrant one there. It's one of, it's a heavy, it's a heavy intersection. That comes down South Eddy. There's a lot of traffic. So he, he suggests one over the intersection and one over the curb. That's what he said. I've talked, I've met a lot of people in the sub that are new and stuff coming down and talking to me about this issue. They do have a lot of kids now. And they're, it is, all they want is the lighting that's in the sub. They just want what everybody else has. The other curve up by Quiniff, that is, got a light. The park is considered, is an intersection. I get it, that comes onto the main road, and it's got its own light. Those ones are only like 65 feet apart, which I get it. It's, it's closer there. When you, if you do our two, there'd be 190 feet between the curve and the intersection lighting. And he said they'll get the right light. It's not going to, you'll have a little bit of light through that movement through there. But he said, we know what to pick, how many, how many watt ones. He said, we'll assess it if they approve it. We do ask you one thing. They do know their lighting. We, we would want Edison to do the, the job if you approve it because they control it all. You call them if there's a problem. Like he said, this is an investment for the safety of kids, not now, future. These lights are for life. Once you get that light up there, they change it, they replace it, new stuff comes out, you get, and LEDs will get dim on you, and they're done. He said, that's all, that's all on us. They number the poles, so when I have a problem, I just give them that pole number. I go on the line, you can just put that pole number in it. Usually, it's a week, sometimes four days to a week. And that's all included. So he is suggesting two 58-watt LED light bulb, or lights, installed repair for light pole numbers. Now, this came from Brandon. And I, this was true for when I was at the schools. I don't know if it is for this city, but he did tell me, you guys get your lights installed for free. There's no charge installation. If there's truth to that, I don't know, I can't, I don't know. But he said the, you. So with that said, let's get to the cost of, and actually, to me, there's, we're dealing with the darkness with kids. The cost is, we shouldn't even talk about cost, but I will give you the cost. After they install them, he thinks 58 watts will do it. Each light, and they, they know what those lights take. They average seven cents a night. Times that by 365 days, you've got $25 a year. We need two, so it's $50 a year to protect that corner. And that intersects finally, and then it's washed from the city. Our whole subdivision then would be controlled by DTE. We won't have to argue anymore with this guy who owns it, you know, who's paying for electricity. It's cut and dry. They handle it. Trying to think where I'm at on this. The neighbors are getting restless because you know what time of year it is, and it's getting darker quicker. And they, they would like to know what, if a plan. They will see this, they have all watched it the last time I was here, but I know that won't come out in time for them to do anything. You know, Halloween is 10 days away. A lot of these parents are getting really, they're concerned about what they're going to do. Because to go around our block, there's no way going right block. You got to go through. I got it, one of my neighbors marked it out. From the last power, the last light to the next light around that horn like that, it is 575 feet. They have to travel to get from one light through that whole deal curve and back to the next light up on top on, on North Eddy. And I said, you sure on that? He said, I use my watch. I said, oh, boy. I said, he said, it's 575. He said, it's right near that, so they have to go around that. So that's how far those kids treating, is got to go. Or their other, and I've already heard it, they're going to make their kids walk back around and then go back down that street. So I think that's all I have to say. It's a very serious problem we have over there. But I hope you take real consideration this time on it and get us our lights.
Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was one of the things that would have been brought up on, under my report later. But while the gentleman's, I didn't know he was going to attend, but while he's here, we have a quick report. It appeared it could be really quick. A quick report from our superintendent and give you an update from our perspective and what we need to do.
I think it's timely.
He did a nice job of putting it in there. And if you do it now, you don't have to bring it up.
Yeah, let's just save some time.
Maybe make him a little happier.
Let's do it.
I was going to ask him to speak since his name was, his name was mentioned, so go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. So I've been over to North Eddy and looked at it. I was over there today and measured the poles that are just south of the light that's out. They are both in the right of way. So it would be correct for us to put a light on those Edison poles. The one that's burned out is not in the road right of way. So we probably should not put a light on that pole. I chose the one pole south of the light on the west side of the road. I think that would light up very sufficient there unless we choose to put two up. There's not a pole right at the curve that's in the right of way. That's, that's the problem with the curve. So I've been directed by the city manager to go ahead and ask for a vote if you'd like to put the lights up.
Council, it's time to put a light up. So make a vote, instruct it, and we get it put up as soon as we can and try to make the corner happy. That being said, I'll make the motion.
Make it, make it quick.
I'll make the.
Put them right on top of the road.
I think that a lot of what the gentleman said is.
Trying to explain. Okay, I get it.
Yeah, they have a 15-foot arm that they put out from the pole, so it goes right out to, almost to the center of the road, not quite. But it gets at least to the edge of the road.
John, I think you were going to say something?
I'm getting ready to make the motion to approve two lights. Okay?
I like it.
Let you guys factor in what you need.
I'll, I'll work with Brandon at DTE. I work very closely with him. He's the one that gave me all the information about the existing light, that it was on private property, and the resident moved out, quit paying the bills, so they stopped maintaining it. And the new resident does not want to maintain.
After the last council meeting, I drove through there. Yeah, it's very dark. Okay.
We've got a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll support.
Okay.
I think it's time to go.
Now, is there any further discussion?
No. It's prioritize safety.
We're going to do two lights, and we're going to get this corner lit up. Okay.
And, and the installation is DTE?
Yes, it is. He's totally correct on the process.
Very nice.
They install them, they maintain them. The fee, what I, Brandon told me, it was $20 a month to maintain the lights, though, so.
It's not $25 a year, it's $20, it's 20, but still, that's very reasonable.
Again, safety is priority.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Motion second?
Okay, we got a motion, we got a second. Any other questions?
Nope. Let's do it.
Okay.
Ready for a vote?
Fernandez.
Yes.
Locke.
Yes.
Lublin.
Yes.
Osnic.
Of course, yes. Said affirmative.
Woods.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Ackley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion carried unanimous. Let there be light. We're done with that issue.
Thank you, Randy. Appreciate your time.
Audience participation now, Mayor. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Randy.
Thanks, Randy.
Happy Halloween.
Happy Halloween, Randy.
Do we have any further audience participation? Anybody else? Do you need a light? Go ahead.
Any subject.
I'm teasing you, ma'am. Go to the podium and have your speak.
Good evening, everybody. Couple different issues that I've noticed.
Well, you need to speak, you need to state your name and address.
No, I do not, sir. Legislation for Michigan State, I do not. Okay. You're proposing a resolution to another drain special assessment. You passed it last year. Anybody?
Yeah.
So it says here from 10/6/24, the resolution is dated 24 to the year 35. May I ask where the money is and how much it was? And why we need more? Okay, we'll continue. Next. Habitual storm water money disappearing, over $3 million, and I can prove it, all from city papers, okay? Here's your report. Ackley, you've known since 2013, we had serious infrastructure problems. Funny, isn't it? Here's some more. The wetlands. Have you received the Army engineering report? Because you were supposed to receive it before you passed it in an open meeting, but you did not. So I brought you a copy just in case. So you cannot say you were not informed. This clearly delineates that property as wetland. Two wetlands, right here. You also applied for a 301 to do your drain, and you claimed there was no water involved. It's a 301, it's the Inland Lakes and Streams Act. But you didn't do your due diligence. Then, you spent $3 million back here, and I can prove that too, even though the people turned down the millage. Okay? Now you want more money for sewage and drains with no receipts from where this money went. I'd like to know what infrastructure improvements have been done. That should be public information, okay? Let's see. The wetlands was passed under closed meeting at the Planning Commission. Then it was tabled. Then in October of last year, it was mysteriously passed. How can this be? I wonder, she says, okay? So administrative officer, budget, public safety, they are conflict of interest positions. I'd also like to inquire who counts the votes? Because it's my understanding it would be the city clerk that is also. These are conflict of issues, conflict of interest issues that need to be addressed, okay? Now, the road commission, here's the report from the road commission regarding this drain, okay? But now you want to put a 711 in the middle of a protected wetland, and you know it. Now, you went in here and tore up the trees today. This is protected by EPA. And I'm sorry, that makes every member of council in this room guilty of felonies. I brought them too, if anybody would like to inquire. So what I suggest to you is to pay attention to what you are doing and do it right. Oh, but we, one of you council members said, well, we have to go through the planning properly. You did not, okay? There's protected birds, bats, and the inland stream and the Greenway drain. Now, millions of dollars in stormwater money have been misappropriated. It's all in here. By the way, maybe someone could tell me why the 25, 26 budget has been removed from online? And why the sewer fund has four different sets of numbers? Yeah, okay. Next. Embezzlement, in case any of you don't know, to be clear. Passed under a closed meeting. Also violation, okay? You didn't do your diligence, you didn't get the EPA, you didn't get the wetland, the permit under Decker Properties is a business that neither owns the property or is putting in the franchise, okay? I don't see a license. Are you beginning to smell what I'm saying? Now, there's more. In whole or in part to conceal or disguise the nature, location, source, ownership, or control of the proceeds or substituted proceeds is a criminal offense. Every last one of you is also guilty by signing off on the budgets that are not made public, okay? The intergovernment transfers, excuse me? You're charging us to misappropriate funding and then move them back where somebody else thinks they need to be. Why is engineering coming out of the trust fund? That's for escrow only. What are you smiling about? Do you want to look? I brought it just for you. Shall I go on? Now. We had a big water main break.
Ma'am, could you start wrapping it up? You have two minutes.
He had more than two minutes. Don't start with me, ma'am, because you're guilty of felonies.
You've gone far longer than what he had.
No, I did not. Storm and sewer misappropriations in the audits.
Start wrapping it up.
Okay, I'll wrap it up. Here's the next audit, misappropriation of sewage funds. This is by your accountant, not mine. Here's some more. Oh, how about the public safety millage we passed last year? A million dollars. $1 million. Could somebody tell me where it is? Because it should have been in the police and fire safety fund, but it's not. How about the ARPA fund? $484,000 moved out of COVID funding into the general fund. Where are the receipts? Keep smiling, babes. You'd be smiling on the other side. Here's another half million dollars in sewage, your own papers. Another failed audit year after year. Your cap that you've all signed off on. You all know we do not qualify for funding. So not only is the money disappearing, you've taken away all of our rights. You don't listen. You took the money. And because you have misappropriations and cap, we don't qualify for funding. But I see lots of funding in the budget. So where is it? Did we get it or didn't we? Where's the receipts?
Is there anyone else?
What are you going to do about the wetland that was passed under closed meeting?
Thank you.
No, I want an answer. What are you going to do about the wetlands that was illegally passed by the Planning Commission and never went to vote in front of council?
Ma'am, you're finished, you're finished speaking? Your time is up?
No, I'm not finished speaking. I'd like an answer. You have a bigger city council than we have a police department. I'd like to know why.
This is for the audience to speak. We're not, we'll look into the issue. We'll discuss it.
You've looked into the issue. Every, no, no, I'm not. Every month, you were on screen voting illegally. I can prove that too.
That is a matter of.
You illegally have adjusted his contract in the middle of a contract. It's illegal too. Am I making myself clear? Your election? No, 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 no. Wait a minute, wait a minute. Your, your election folder, I want to see the receipt. I'll be coming to City Hall. You don't get to put trunk or treat on your election folder and make me pay for it. Uh-uh, that doesn't work. And how dare you tell me we're going to have, uh... What, what was it? Refuse pickup from someplace else? You signed the contract till 2027. Guess what? That is called campaign fraud. And let's not talk about the letter you wrote a few years ago.
Nobody, the city didn't pay for my campaign.
And then she just wanted to say it to listen.
Okay, everybody. Take a deep breath.
I'll, I'll address that under my comments of the, the issues that we brought up.
I'd like to hear any other audience members.
Yeah, well, you know, let's see who else.
Just give that issue a rest. Is there anyone else else in the audience? Ma'am, you are totally out of order. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak? Yes.
Can I do it for my chair?
No, I prefer you come up to the podium. I can hear you better if you use the microphone.
Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Chris. I have been a longtime resident of the city of Wal Lake. And what the hell was that?
When you figure it out, would you come back and explain it?
She's throwing paper around and is this legit? Should somebody answer?
No, sir.
None of it? She all, she fabricated all of that?
No, I'll make a comment too. So I did share publicly yesterday because people had asked where they could get the correct information. So if you go on the finance and budget portion within the, of the webpage, I believe it's from 2012 to 2024, has all the audited reports. Third party, right? It's not Wal Lake. It's a third party that comes in and goes through all of our documentation, all our checks, all our receipts, everything, and matches it up to what the budget is. Also on there is the two-year, 2006, 2007 budget. 2006 was approved. 2025 audit, that's in progress right now. So all that information, the factual information, is online. So everybody has a chance to go take a look at it. I shared that yesterday. I think we heard today that it wasn't online. I just saw.
Just, she went in so many different directions. I'm trying to wrap my head around this and I'm going, okay, so you guys are all felons?
In some, some people's opinion, it looks that way, sir.
Okay, so with that being said, I would like to question the, since it's up for discussion. The, is that actual wetlands at Maple and Decker? Where the 711s going in?
Yes. I don't know.
We're gonna, I'm going to address some of that stuff that she brought up. Because the, the things about criminal activity. The thing I would say to you, if the mayor will let me, simply is we have pristine audits for the last 15 years. They're always good. In fact, our auditors for this last recent, recently completed year will be in, hopefully, in, in November next month. And it, we, we got a clean audit that, that's what they call it. Either she, she's making it up from scratch. You know, we've got million, multi-millions of dollars in grants. And this idea that somehow we don't get grants because our audits are bad. First of all, if your audits are bad, the state takes over. That's what they do. And so, and if we were felons, there's a whole lot FBI agents that want to put us in jail right now. Maybe a couple, you could be one.
I just, you know, when somebody makes an accusation like that, it's like, so are there, like, arrest warrants to follow for these felonies, guys? I mean.
Would you believe it? That's not the worst accusation she's made? It is not. Against another public official here. So what you have to do as a public official is you wait until it's timely. I don't want to affect the election, but I will respond to the stuff that's absolute lie that candidates can use to get themselves in office, and they apparently are. It, it's just wrong. We, we, this, the, we fixed the finances. We've gotten millions of dollars. The idea that we don't get grants? The public meeting, the public hearing was about just such a grant. We got $7,000 in grant money. If that was true, or if there any relation to that, we wouldn't be getting anything. So we got millions and millions. I've gotten millions and applied for millions. We've never been denied anything. When we go into a competitive grant, we get denied money. The other stuff that she brought up, and I'm going to bring up because it's kind of a lengthy discussion. And, you know, I don't want to school you or anybody else.
I don't want to be up here for eight minutes.
But there is no felons here. I've been doing this for a couple of years, you know? This is the most honest commission. And I have worked with commissioners where, and council members, they call them, depending, who are not as ethically pristine as this group is. This is the, the group, and it's not even the same group that hired me. I've been here a long time and it's changed, and it's changed, and it's changed. They get in, they see it. But no, the, what, the woman has got an agenda. Her agenda is built on her own animosity towards the public, public officials. It could be the fact that she wants nothing to be built on the property that she doesn't own. And indeed, I think she's a renter. She's allowed to have her opinion. We're not criminals. If we were, we'd be in jail. Audits are reviewed by and referred to the Attorney General's Department. If they're, if they're criminal, if there was evidence in what she's doing, that would be investigated right now. So we've been, for years, we've been violating the law. And again, I'll address it more in terms of how radically silly the, some of the stuff she says. I will say that later, but, you know, that, right now, that's it. None of, there ain't a thing she's saying that makes any sense. None of it. I mean, it, it just, it does, you can come up with something, but she's, she's, she's off the wall. She's not settled.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your time. I just needed some clarification.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
It was kind of, it was kind of scary. Just saying, just saying.
Okay, thank you.
It's not always like that here.
Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Is, is there anyone else? Audience participation finished. We need a motion to approve the regular council minutes of September 16th.
Woods will make the motion to approve the council meeting of September 16th, 2025.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay, but motion, I have support. Any discussion, questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Locke?
Yes.
Bublin?
Yes.
Osnick?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Ackley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Council report. We'll start with Mindy.
We usually do start.
I always start.
You were just looking like you were ready.
I am ready. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. The Parks and Rec Commission did meet, uh, uh, or last week. We have a lot of great going, things going on, very exciting. We have two more marketplaces to come out to over here at the Casey Ambrose Safety Campus. It's a great event. The vegetables and the pumpkins and everything right now are so vibrant and so beautiful. And the salted bagels are amazing. So that's, we've got two more of those. We talked about the concert series. That has finished up for the, for the year. But we went over that, talked about it. I think it was a great year. And next year, we are considering putting it at a new location. You know, we'll have some at Harum Sims, some at another location we're thinking about here. Or even if we have available property somewhere in downtown area. Highlights to come. The, that may be an option. So we are looking at the cost of those and we're going to have to build that up into our budget for next year. So we'll talk about that more at the budget meetings that we have. So look for bigger and better concerts. It's going to be great. I'm excited. Then we also, let's see. The tree lighting is December 1st. It's always a big deal. The, it's between here. We do stuff in the firehouse. We have hot cocoa and a special guest. And then we also have, and then we have the tree lighting outside. We have the bands come. And that's going to be exciting. Then we, something I think that's really cool is the DIA, the Detroit Institute of Arts, has a program called the Inside Outside Program. And we did meet with their, their.
Representative.
Representative. Thank you. Stephanie. And she was, she was great. So we went around and toured a bunch of locations. We will have up to seven pieces of art available at different locations throughout the city. Those will be available on, you'll go up to one and you'll have a QR code. You take a QR code and it, and it pops up and it'll show you where all of the pieces of art. So you can go, kind of like a mini art prize from Grand Rapids. You can go around and, and see all the art here. We're looking at a couple of pieces here on the City Hall campus. The trailhead for airline, the airline trail. And then downtown. And I think one at Harum Sims. So those are the locations right now. They're going to get back to us. Dan went with us to make sure that we can, that they're going to be installed properly. And then they promised us that they will keep up on the upkeep of them if any damage should happen to them. It is, the art will be available from April through October. So I think it's going to be really exciting. I'm excited. Wal Lake did it years ago, is a totally different program. I think this one is a lot more well thought out and thinking about the community and how we will use the art. So I look forward to that for next spring. There's another one that we are thinking about doing, a holiday lights contest. It's something we used to do in Wal Lake. And we'll have people that can, you can apply for it. But have, you know, some people come around and judge, and then we have prizes available. But I think it'll really light up our community at the holiday season. So I think that was it. Mr., do you have any other things you want to add?
Me?
Yeah.
No, no, I'm done.
Phenomenal.
Good to see you. Thank you. It's good to see you. I think that's the end of my report.
I just want to add on that the DIA Inside Out program is a, is, they really provide that at no charge to us, even though there may be some landscaping that we need to work with, with our DPW. But it's still a program that is not costing very much.
It's our first.
I'm the library liaison, so the library meeting did meet on Friday. And back to schools in full swing. The circulation continues to increase. Downloadables are up over 25% August to September. Internet and wireless are all up. We have a program almost every day and attendance continues to increase. So people are using our library. We've hired a new children's librarian. Her name is Taylor. I might not say this correctly, Comier or Comei. And she's from the Imlay City Library, and she's going to be living this way now. And we're excited for her ideas and contributions. And we are also excited to celebrate our Friends 40th Anniversary this Thursday, 3:00 to 6:00 PM. We'll have cider and donuts and cookies. And this is also National Friends of the Library Week, so coincides with that. And really, the Friends group is, is contributing and helping. Patty Holland Soma has been an outstanding leader, and we appreciate her effort. And there's also a book sale this Saturday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And it's $5 a bag. And if you are a member of the Friends, it's $2.50 a bag. So if you are a reader and you like, I, I think, you know, it's something that can be well attended. And library is running smoothly and, and a great part of our team. Thank you.
Thank you.
I attended the Lakes Area Youth Assistance Taste of the Lakes earlier this month. That association is an important association within, within our, our community. It's very similar to the Hospitality House. A little bit separate, a little bit different. They, they help provide and prevent kids from getting into trouble, whether that be legal trouble, family trouble, or anything in between. And the event Taste of the Lakes, it's, it's hosted by a phenomenal group of ladies and gentlemen. All of your restaurants throughout the, the Lakes area. Some restaurants here in the Wal Lake area, and absolutely our neighboring communities as well participated. We had city officials from some of the Lakes areas as well there, and some school board individuals as well just to answer anybody's questions. So I was wearing a lot of hats that day. If some of you might know what, what I do. But it was fun. It was a very rewarding event. And I just look forward to continue building a better Wal Lake every single day. Thank you.
The Planning Commission did not meet. There's just nothing to report.
As you know, Councilwoman Fernandez did, and I met with DT earlier this year. So we're starting to see more action happening. There's light poles, right, to continue on the light discussion. There's poles that are getting swapped out on the north end over on Commerce and Pontiac Trail. And then one of the things that we did have on our list that I happily saw on the way here was the two lights that are pretty much 1950s style were removed on Pontiac Trail just south of Wal Lake Drive. So we have some new LEDs there. So the work is taking traction. We're seeing it. It's, doesn't happen overnight. But it's good to see DT taking some action and helping us out.
Yep. Phenomenal.
And building that relationship so that when something does happen.
I mean, relationships are a business. That's, that's important. Thank you, Ryan.
You're welcome.
I was able to be at the meeting that Mindy was talking about. And there is a lot going on. It's great to see the enthusiasm of the group. And it's, it's just, let's make Wal Lake great. And we're doing it. And it's, it's good. I also noticed some of the new lights in town. And they're looking very nice. Not because it's called the mayor's trunk or treat, but because there is going to be a trunk or treat. It's coming 26th on Sunday. And I hope everyone can come out and attend. If you have children, bring them, grandchildren, or if you just want to come out and enjoy seeing all the kids have fun. They, they really do, and they enjoy themselves at this event. Anyone who wants to come and open up the trunk, go back into their pickup, whatever they want to do. You don't have to decorate. Just bring candy and be there to, to hand out for the kids. And they really enjoy themselves. It's an event that's getting bigger and bigger every year. And I do really enjoy it and enjoy seeing the kids. So I hope anyone that would like to make it can make it and enjoy the day. City manager, what do you have for us?
Mayor, let me start with requesting that you, that the mayor and council move to receive and file the consent agenda consisting of the written departmental and divisional statistical reports.
Do I have a motion, please?
Osnick will make the motion.
Ambrose will second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion, questions, ready to vote? Roll call, please.
Bublin?
Yes.
Osnick?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Ackley?
Yes.
Thank you.
It seems appropriate to address the resolution. It's on there. I think you're, it's on page 74, Proposed Resolution Drain Special Assessment. I find it ironic that people come in and suggest that they're experts or even understand what they're talking about. And that's being picked up by, by the internet and the election people. And, and what I want to assure you, that all of the people who are wizards of finance haven't, in 15 years that I've been here, attended a budget meeting, a council meeting approving the budget or otherwise. First of all, this resolution doesn't raise taxes. We're not raising taxes at all. We don't get any money based on this resolution. The city doesn't get the money. This is the misunderstanding or the misstatements of folks who want to politicize it. The reason for this resolution exists and began in 1956. In 1956, they passed a drain code in the state of Michigan and created a drain commissioner. The drain commissioner is the one that's in charge of cleaning out the ditches and the drains. And then back then in 56, they combined them all and improved the system. Well, the drain commissioner is the one who has the power to make the assessments. Fast forward to 2000, well, let's see, 1976 would be the first real change in it. And the state of Michigan thought it was wise to give the authority to the local county commission to change the title of the drain commissioner to none other than the Water Commissioner, the Water Resource Commissioner. You've seen them, WRC. They do a lot of stuff with pipes and water, but they also clean. They are the ones who do this, do the assessments. They're the ones who decide what you pay. The money goes to them. It doesn't go to the city. Not a penny of it goes to the city. But we are required by that same law from 1956 that's been amended from time to time. We are required to put it on our assessment rolls. That's what this is about. All we're doing is passing it through. We don't get the money. It doesn't go in our budget. It doesn't get transferred out. The woman stood right there like she was knowledgeable, and she was faking it until she was trying to make it. She was saying, where's the money? Well, call WRC. They've not misappropriated anything. We didn't misappropriate anything. The woman can't read a budget, or if she can, she's just straight up lying. You know, she doesn't understand the basic rules of auditing that are required by statute in almost every state in the Union, if not every state in the Union. But we're required to follow those rules. Whenever the audit's done by independent, they have to be independent auditors. If there's any criminal activity identified, they forward it immediately to the auditor general and the, and the attorney general for prosecution. All of the things that she said would have been prosecuted. What'd she say? It started seven years ago? We've not had a bad audit in 15 years. When I got here, they hadn't had a timely audit in 10. They weren't doing timely. That's not a crime. It's not a felony. You don't go to jail. But you do get your city looked at by the state, and they will take over. They were this close. That's how I got here. We've had clean audits since the day I got here. We have cleaned up the, the records, the books. We've gotten multi-millions of dollars in, in grants. So that's a false statement that she knows is better. And so she attacks me personally, and I'm aware of that because it's been reported to me, not just here, but other ways. And so she attracts the legitimacy of this council. And so she attracts the legitimacy of this council. Well, I stand with them. I've been doing it for a couple of years and so I would challenge her to file the charges with any reputable agency. I'd say the county might come in and investigate, state police might, FBI. I don't know, wherever she wants to go. But she's making it up because she's angry about something more than me or this council. She's an angry, mean woman and I'm going to ask the police chief to send our social worker over to see if they can do an intervention for her. So that's all I've got on that issue. So we need you to vote yes on the resolution. It's not a tax. Do you want to add to that? I know you're uncomfortable here, Ms. Pesca, but is it a tax?
No, it is not a tax. We are the collecting agency for the county as well as the schools. We are the ones who collect and then disperse it to them.
We don't get it. You know, she said, where is it? Now, if she was an expert, she would know that. I'm wondering if she's read all 131 pages of the Drain Code, you know? If she had, because she's a wizard of investigation and she's passing that to all these candidates who are putting it out there and are putting false information up and you can say anything. Here's one more and then I'm going to let you go. On the internet, it says that the city administration, that's me, I guess, and all of us, we condemned the Wald Lake School Building and had it tore down. That is false. We have no authority to condemn the school board. It's under the authority of the state. Anything the school board earns is run by the state. We didn't condemn it. This council tried to save it. We sued the school board not to tear it down. We lost because they explained to us the school board can do whatever they want and they do. But that's not what you're reading on the internet. You're reading this false pretense for election results. This is what the city did. I don't know that I need to go any further. She's a phony. She's the fraud, not me. My shit's legit. That's just the way it is. That's all I've got. I can't think of anything else that I want to say because I'm getting really angry with the stupidity of all this. You can't fix stupid.
Oh, you can't.
Okay. But the gentleman did have a question about whether that property over there is a wetland. Could we just address that real quickly?
Well, it's not a wetland that prohibits what's going on. I mean, you know, the idea that, you know, she goes and finds something. Remember, that's the same woman that said she was going to get down on these and find this, that, and the other, you know, and she was misstate and stuff there. Well, she's going to find something and this, that, and the other. I'm not sure what that means, you know, that there's some wetland. This whole place was wetlands at one time or another. There's nothing there that prohibits the development that's going on. You think that WRC, the state, all the people wouldn't have intervened? Secondly, why hasn't she gone to them to get them to intervene? Why hasn't she sued the city, which I'd love to do, you know, get her under deposition, see where she's getting this wonderful information, what her credentials are? I know what mine are, but she's making it up because she's got an agenda and her agenda's political, her political agenda. And it's serving some folks very well, I guess, but it's not going to work. We had the duty to do what we did. The planning commission did what they needed to do. Staff did what they needed to do and they're putting the work people and they're going to put jobs in the city. I just don't see the downside of it. Tremendous buffer in that area over there. She didn't want any use of the property at all. Well, that's just not the way it works. That's not the way it works anywhere and no elected official can stop those things. The ones that have tried, there's multimillion dollar cases where they did what people like her want to do and then the citizens had to pay multi-millions of dollars. What's the most recent one? I think upstate, there's one, it's like $40 million, 50 million, where they wouldn't let them do what they were allowed to do and it's a $50 million lawsuit and they're going to pay for it. There's a couple of other cities around. I don't want to mention them.
You know by?
Well, there you, I will mention it now because you did. That was that 38 million because somebody like her stopped it. No, we did it right. We got them to do as best we could. We got a buffer in there. The planning commission did a good job. The city staff did a good job. We kept them at bay until we got it right and so we did the right things for all of the citizens. I think she's a renter, so she probably moves right after this gets in, you know, because she threatened that and I hope that's true, so.
I drove past it. You can see the buffer. You can see the footprint that they're making. There's quite a large buffer on the south side. The south side.
Over that, in the west.
That way and then this way. There's quite a large buffer. You can see the footprint if you drive past it, so.
There is a greenway drain that does go through the south piece, but they're not going to that and that's why, I mean, is there water? Yeah, there's a little creek that goes up and feeds into here and comes across and goes, you know, goes right on through. So, you know.
The greenway drain was never part of her discussions in prior. The greenway drain came up because she's trying to make you believe for her political purposes, she's not trying to make the public believe at a public meeting that this council's raising taxes. And so if there's three people out there that believe that, I'm sorry, they're, you know, but that's not what it is. It never was and never will be. The Drain Commissioner, Water Resource Commissioner, that's where the money goes. And she's sitting here telling you, she demands an answer, where'd the money go? Simple. She could read like she pretends like she can't. She certainly can't read an audit.
Chris, did that answer your question? Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing me in.
That should keep her busy for the rest of tonight, I think.
I think so.
Can't wait for tomorrow's post, huh?
All set?
Okay. That's all you have this evening?
I hope so.
Okay.
An 82.
Any correspondence?
No, Madam Mayor.
Attorney's report.
We do not have one.
We have no attorneys today, right? Guess he has no report unless he left one with someone.
No, he did not.
Okay, they're unfinished business. We have none. New business. We have a few resolutions tonight. The first one is a budget amendment. Do I have a motion on this one for East Wald Lake Drive?
Woods will make the motion to approve amending and appropriating funds from the major road fund balance for fiscal year 2025 through 2026 to accommodate East Wald Lake Drive storm sewer, road, and sidewalk repair funding requirements to current fiscal year. This being Resolution 2025-26.
Osnech will second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion or questions on this? Roll call, please.
Osnech?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Ackley? Thank you.
Next item is Proposed Resolution 2025-27, Policy to Address Requests for Tax Exemption on Real Personal Property.
Osnech will make the motion, a resolution of the city council to adopt real property tax exemption application form in compliance with Michigan compiled laws 211-10G1H546. Anyway, I can't read Roman numerals.
It's Roman numerals.
This being Resolution 2025-27.
Lublin supports that.
Okay, we have a motion. We have support. Any questions or comments on this? Roll call, please.
Woods?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Osnech?
Yes.
Ackley? Thank you.
Okay, number three is Proposed Resolution 2025-28, Drain Special Assessment, at least on the winter 2025 tax roll.
We voted on that, did we? Or no?
Lublin will make the proposed resolution of approving the 2025 Special Assessments for Repair and Maintenance of the Greenway Drain, Leon Drain, and Taylor-Lad Drain be placed on the 2025 December City of Wald Lake tax roll. That being Proposed Resolution 2025-28.
Ambrose will second that.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Questions or comments?
I think I've said enough on that, but recall, maybe it's time to say it.
Yep.
You're required as a council to do this. You're required
Thank you.
to collect the money. So it's not like you get to say, we're not going to do that, therefore somebody's not going to get taxed. The Water Resource Commissioner, who's also the Drain Commissioner, his team does that. They decide what it is and it's used to maintain the drains and do all kinds of things. They even tax the city, by the way. They tax municipalities. They have tremendous authority to do what they do. So it's not a tax that the city collects for the city. It's not a tax that the city can stop or reduce or vote against. That's just what we do. I've never been in a position where we just refuse to do what the state says you're supposed to do. My guess is they would sue us and make us do it. So let's just pass it.
The greenway drain has been a tax for many, many years.
It's not just the greenway. It's a few of them. It's all of them.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Thank you. Lublin?
Yes.
Osnech?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Ackley? Thank you.
Okay, item number four, Resolution 2025-29, To Differ Special Meeting Requirements For Swearing Into Office.
Ambrose will make that motion, Proposed Resolution 2025-29.
Woods will second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Locke?
Yes.
Lublin?
Yes.
Osnech?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Ackley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Council comments. Ms. Rosnick?
I hope everybody shows up for the trunk and treat this coming Sunday. I think it'll be a nice turnout. There was a real nice turnout for the trunk and treat that was held last Saturday. It was quite nice, except we got rained out. But anyway, they're here, they're there. They were a very good turnout. The kids enjoyed themselves. Many, many very nice costumes. That's my comment.
That's all? Okay, Mindy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got two things. First, I wanted to say thank you to, and call out Paul Barch. He's our ordinance officer. I've been out, I was out over at Randy's house, actually, and Paul drove by. We had a nice long conversation about what's going on. I had been talking to him about some questions on some condemnations and things like that and how that process goes. He's been very thoughtful in teaching me about how that process goes and how the city handles those. So I really want to call out Officer Barch and really say thank you to him. The other thing is, is that this weekend on Saturday is National Take Back Day where any drugs that you may have in your home, you can bring them up here to the police door over there and somebody will be in the lobby to take those from you. How much have we collected so far?
I want to say last year was well over 100 pounds.
Yeah. Those are drugs that are now out of our community and not going to fall in the hands of people who are going to do bad things with them. So we appreciate that and that those are illegal drugs if they're not being used by the person who is prescribed. So I want to really encourage you, if you have any drugs hanging around your house, any opioids or anything like that, please get them out of the house and get them into our hands and so we can dispose of them for you.
And they're not flushed into the water system.
Exactly.
Yeah, don't do that either.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So 15 years ago, we hired our city manager. We were close to being under a state emergency city manager, which because of our complete fiscal irresponsibility. During the last 15 years, we have made great improvements. Our departments, our police, the average hour, what we've done, we've eliminated borrowing. We have absolutely no debt today. We save before we spend. All of our departments have cutting-edge equipment and vehicles, newer, top-of-the-line stuff to let them do their job properly. Our parks have never looked better. Our DPW department is doing a great job. Our police department is top-notch and our average hourly amount of money that we pay per hour is less than our surrounding communities. Our fire department is a three in a rating of 1 to 10, being 1 being the best. And that not only gives us a better insurance rating, but that means that when you call, they're there. And I just saw on 3 minutes and 51 seconds, a fireman will, the fire department will show up to your house. So they're doing a great job. We're not just keeping our departments healthy. We've gone, we did go from 44 full-timers down to 17. I think we're now down or up to about 21 or 22. And how we're become so effective is we're utilizing part-timers. And, you know, if you pay more, you'll get better people. And we're, the money that we save continuously, we're doing projects. All of our major roads, Maple Road, Decker Road, Pontiac Trail, LAD this year, we're working on subdivisions and we save the money before we spend it. And we're even doing a major infrastructure project down at the lake, those two blocks from Pontiac Trail going towards the beach, or at least one of the blocks. I mean, we're spending over a million dollars and we're not borrowing to do it. So that has been a mess as long as I've lived here, 42 years, 41 and a half years, and we're tackling projects that no one has ever wanted to do. Our sidewalks, our lights, you know, we're getting to these things and the community, there's an election coming up, the incumbents, Mindy Fernandez, John Osnech, myself, Bennett Lublin, Mayor Linda Ackley. You want to vote for us if you want to continue the progress. That's my comment.
And that wasn't a paid political announcement. Casey?
Other than the miss of summer, this is the next greatest time to be in Wald Lake. From commercial buildings to your residential buildings, it's very rewarding to see the building owners, the property owners, the business owners, the residents who take care of their properties, so much so that it gets into the holiday season and they begin to put out all of their holiday decorations. I'm very excited for the Parks and Rec and their early discussions on Christmas light competition.
I'm sorry, and that's going to be for next year?
Next year, absolutely. But things like that, it breeds good energy. Positive energy brings positive energy and you can see that with some businesses in town, some residents in town. It's not hard to see somebody recoil their hose and not leave it out or mow their lawn and not leave it long or just put up a pumpkin or two and make it a festive season. So it's another beautiful time to be in Wald Lake. I'll see you this Sunday at Mary Ackley's trunk or treat. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Proton?
Well, I also agree with what's been stated here before me. At the same time, too, I'm going to get into a little bit of detail. Our DPW supervisor, Dan Ladd, was one of the first ones to get to the water main break. So when one call started to get out, he was there quickly. So we know that our team works quickly and efficient. Obviously, he can't fix a water main break that's 42 inches, but when it happens, they're on it quickly. To the fire chief, you and your staff, rights, back supporting what happened in Grand Blanc, that's important. I think that mutual aid, that we're all a part of. If you ever get a chance to go through it and find out the card system of what the dispatch unit does and what we're a part of, it'll amaze you, which also helps our fast response times. So appreciate that and, of course, our clerks do an amazing job. We get a lot of accolades for that. They do a great job every year and we really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I add to his comment, the mayor protest comment? I'd like to thank the council members for helping with the water distribution. That was a big deal. The city was out of water. The surrounding cities were out of water. Because of decisions made by the mayor and council, we got water to, we got water to the villas rapidly because of the requests and the demands by members of this council. Some of you, if not all of you, spent your time distributing the water. The lines were backed up. I think everybody knows. We brought them back at least once after that. The only downside to that whole thing was that we had other people trying to pretend like they were somehow involved, giving bad information about when the water was to be like they were somehow involved, giving bad information about when the water was to be boiled or when it was relieved and all of that. That can get silly. The fact is, the information come from the people working on the pipes, and that's what we relayed. Other people were doing it to look like they were important and putting it out, and some of it turned out to be absolutely wrong. The good news is, is it got fixed very quickly, so we didn't have to continue with that or shut it down. But this council, all of you responded well and assisted. I don't know how many backs got pulled or muscles got pulled from those, what were they, thirty-pound bags of water or something, you know? So the Gleewa people were great. They came down, not only did we go to Public Works, Fire, whoever else was, we brought in a whole lot of water, bottled water, everything they had at Costco, I guess, instantly. But then the Gleewa brought in the thing there, so we had plenty of water. We never did run out, right? But the mayor and council distributed that. I think everybody knew that. And we had no involvement in the fix other than, you know, keeping the people abreast of it. They're still doing work, work, work. Water pressure's not good in every place. Novi had the biggest hit, maybe for the longest time, because it happened on their side. But there's work down on our side, or at least it's affecting our side on fourteen closer to the lake. But they're getting close. They're wrapping it up in terms of redoing it. It looks like they may redo the whole road all over again, or, you know, because they've dug it up so much. So we'll see. But again, thank the council. I think the Mayor Pro Tem was on it. I mean, actually, he popped me a text, I don't know what time, six-thirty, whatever it was in the morning, or very early.
We were all in the shower.
Oh, he did. He's like here.
Where'd the water go?
You were in the shower.
I told him we're on it. I think, but he's got the, you got the picture of Dan. Somebody got the picture of Dan's truck over there, you know? So he was already there, and it looked like a lake, if you will, a river flowing. It was rough. But then the other folks were a little slower, getting, you know, off the dime, but he was on it. It was, it must have been after seven. I know you don't get here at six-thirty. Never.
Yeah, it was like seven.
It was seven.
But we were on it. But again, all we can do is call them, and he knows who to call directly. You need to get people over here. So thanks for your help in terms of making staff look good, because you did. Getting the water out, the people at the Villa were very pleased and happy about getting that. And thank you, Mindy, for setting that up. Thank you, Mayor, for taking it, and thank you, guys, for handing it out, you know? That's it. I just wanted to add to that because I think you were going to pass. You weren't going to give yourself credit, so.
I have a request. Can we get a letter out? Can we get a letter out to Kroger? I'll get you the people that I worked with at Kroger about getting the water up to the Villa. And they also increased their water distributions to their local stores, the one over on Hagerty and the one on Pontiac Trail. They upped their water that week, so if we can get a letter to them. Thank you.
Do you need a motion, or?
No, I got it.
No, we'll get it. We'll take it. We'll take care of it.
Mayor, before you do your report, Councilwoman Locke, possibly, is online.
Oh, yeah. Don't forget Councilmember Locke.
Yes, thank you, gentlemen. I, that was my next step. I was waiting for everybody to have their piece.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing more to say than my fellow council members have already said. Thank you, everyone, for your hard work.
Thank you, Tamara.
I think I'm in the same position you're in. Everything that I had jotted down has probably been said here tonight, and what hadn't been said, the city manager took over. So it was quite an experience, I will say, in a, in a way, a tragic event, but it was, it was nice to see the people coming out and working with them and helping them get water. And I think the part I enjoyed most was going up and delivering water up to the Villa and could actually sit and talk with some of the seniors and explain to them who didn't understand. And I can remember one lady, she says, "I haven't had a shower in two days. When can I take a shower?" And I said, "Ma'am, take a shower. Just don't open your mouth while you're doing it." And she looked at me and laughed, and she said, "Oh, I can take a shower." And I said, "Of course you can. Just don't swallow the water, okay?"